I'd like to call over to the regular city council meeting of Monday, March 8th with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
City Clerk Patterson here. Council members Ratty.
Here.
Salerno.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Carrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City Manager Carey.
Here.
Acting City Attorney Doug.
Here.
Doug.
Doug is here.
Thornley, excuse me.
Okay, next if you'd all stand for the invocation Pastor Steve Bond Summit Christian Church, welcome Pastor.
Father, we come to you today in a time of great challenge for our nation, for our community, and we pause these moments briefly to just ask for your blessing over the folks in our community that are particularly affected by the economic scene that we're experiencing. Father, we pray for those that are unemployed and we pray for those that are underemployed and we ask for mercy and grace over their lives, that you would sustain them and provide avenues for employment, even as we pray for those businesses in our community, Lord, that have the capability of providing employment, we pray for you to prosper and bless those businesses. Give the business leaders in our community great wisdom, we ask, as they make challenging decisions in these days. And Father, we especially lift to you these men and women that represent our city of Sparks and we ask in these extremely challenging times that you give them wisdom that would allow them to discern what is the best in a very challenging environment. Father, with resources that are increasingly scarce, we pray for wise decisions that would allow allocations that would be pleasing to you and in the best interest of our broader community. And Lord, I do pray that you would help these men and women not to grow weary in well doing. Their role of leadership is critical in these days and we ask for you to lift their hearts, to lift their heads and that they wouldn't grow discouraged and that, Father, they would see positive examples of their efforts bearing fruit and that you would carry us through this time, knowing that there will be a day when prosperity will return and we look forward to that, Lord, and ask for you to carry us to that time. Thank you now. Guide this meeting, Lord, and would everything be done with proper decorum and with peace and with integrity? We give you thanks in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Bond for those kind words. Pledge of Allegiance, if you can remain standing, please. Doug, would you lead us?
I would lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is comments from the public. I do not have any cards for anyone to speak under comments from the public. Anyone like to speak under comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
Do you have a second, Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve the agenda as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Okay, recommendation to approve minutes of February 22nd, 2010. Any additions or corrections? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Salerno.
Move to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Salerno, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve the regular meeting minutes of February 22nd. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Okay, before we go on, in case you haven't seen my shirt, it's for the WAC tournament, which starts Wednesday. The women, I believe, start Wednesday and the men start on Thursday, so if you've got time, take in the tournament. It's going to be well worth the time. The UNR men and women are both playing pretty well right now, so I think being on the home court, they've got a chance to win it all and hopefully you'll support them. Thank you. Okay, next announcements, presentations. We have a proclamation for Assistance League of Reno Sparks Day. Okay, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation and I'll present it. City of Sparks Proclamation. Whereas the Assistance League of Reno Sparks will celebrate its 30th birthday on March 17th, 2010, and whereas the Reno Sparks Chapter is not subsidized by any organization, all philanthropic programs are staffed and administered by chapter volunteers, and whereas Assistance League volunteers provide services which benefit individuals in need in our community with emphasis on children, seniors, and victims of abuse, and whereas Assistance League volunteers contribute more than 48,000 hours annually in Washoe County. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim March 17th, 2010 Assistance League of Reno Sparks Day and join with the city council in acknowledging the important role of the Assistance League of Reno Sparks in our community. Thank you for your commitment and dedication. Okay, for the record, if you just want to give us your name and then all three of you please, and then we'll, the President, I think, wants to speak.
I'm Dorothy Gates.
Mary Weeks, President.
Marlene Nelson, Public Relations Chairman.
Okay. So why don't I come down and present the proclamation? Don't try to get out. There you go.
You're so photogenic, Mayor.
Yeah, it's my flowing hair.
There you go. Dr. Plus, go hard.
Okay, you have the mic.
On behalf of Assistance League of Reno Sparks, I would like to thank the Mayor and the City of Reno for acknowledging us and providing us with this proclamation for our achievements. Thank you very much.
Thank you and thank you, ladies, for all you do for the community. We really appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next is consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Okay, if not, looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do you have a second? Mr. Salerno.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Salerno to approve consent items 5-1 through 5-7. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Okay, general business items. 6.1 Review and Possible Acceptance of $3,000 Donation from Sparks Little League for Field Improvements at the Shadow Mountain Sports Complex. Tracy Dominguez, welcome Tracy.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and council members. My name's Tracy Dominguez, Recreation Superintendent, and before you is consideration of a donation of $3,000 that we have received from the Sparks Little League Centennial, and we've experienced, as you know, a major reduction in man-hours needed to maintain our existing park system. Therefore, any monetary donation is greatly appreciated during this downturn. Recognizing that we can't do it, cannot do what we have in the past years, the Sparks Little League has agreed to finance the infield renovation at Shadow Mountain. As a result, the Little League Centennial program will be included in our Partners in Parks program, so they'll get plenty of recognition and we also work with them through the Sparks Youth Sports Foundation.
Great. Questions for Tracy? Comments, Mr. Smith.
Is this the first year we've gotten this from them?
No, I'm not sure, Brian.
I just don't remember it, but it's, thank you.
We're getting groups to step forward, which I think is unprecedented right now in our park system in assisting in many different ways. Pop Warner has given money before, I know. Brian Besett usually would present this, so I'm not aware of the history exactly.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to accept the donation.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve item 6.1, the donation from the Sparks Centennial Little League. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Thanks Tracy.
Thank you.
I think maybe, we hope this will continue with other leagues and things, as I know we're going to need this kind of stuff in the future to keep things going, so we appreciate what Sparks Centennial Little League has done.
Fastpitch has also come forward, but it's a lesser amount, so it will go before our parks and recreation permission.
Every little bit helps, though.
Absolutely.
Thanks Tracy. Okay, 6.2 Consideration and Possible Approval of a Memorandum of Understanding between the County of Washoe, City of Reno, and City of Sparks concerning the process to be used for the allocation of recovery zone facility bond capacity and the issuance of said bonds.
Thank you very much for explaining all of that.
Yikes.
Good afternoon, Kathy Kluit, Government Affairs Analyst. Before you is the Memorandum of Understanding between Washoe County, City of Reno, and City of Sparks to go ahead and facilitate the creation and the running of the subcommittee to spend the RZF bond money.
Okay. And who did we appoint? Mr. Carrigan.
Mr. Carrigan and Ms. Ratty.
Ms. Ratty. Thanks for stepping up to do that, we appreciate it.
Yeah, I just want to say that our first meeting is in a couple of weeks and it's only five hours long, so.
That's it?
Yeah.
Getting off easy then? Mr. Schmidt.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for, maybe if we can outline, so everybody's aware of what these bonds are for, because I mean, we get different phone calls from people saying, "You've got all this money coming in," and maybe if you can just give a brief outline exactly what this program is, because I think, you know, you can see in here already all the different people that are trying to, you know, SK baseball, trying to get them and stuff, and maybe you could outline so the council's aware and everybody's aware out there in TV land what these bonds exactly do.
Absolutely. These bonds were part of funds that came out and were distributed through the ARA process and these bonds specifically were given to cities and/or counties that during a specific period of time in 2008 had experienced a lot of unemployment, which is one reason why Las Vegas did not get any of these funds. Their unemployment didn't hit until after the time zone of this. Sparks was not given money directly because we didn't have the population of the 100,000 and so Washoe County was given funds, City of Reno was given funds, and that's what these funds are from. Part of the issue is that not only whoever's going to apply for these funds, do they have to meet the ARA bonding rules and regulations, they also have to meet the NRS, the State of Nevada, rules and regulations on how to be able to bond and get the funding. So far, which, and the deadline passed, they did send out a letter everywhere, it was, you know, put out every place. 14 companies came forth for this. I think between all 14, they've asked for something like $500 million, so there's obviously not that much. We're only dealing with about $120 million. That's why this subcommittee has formed, is to go through and figure out which, and however the process is that they come up with actually, that's one reason why that meeting is going to be so long. The subcommittee needs to come up with how they want to deal with it and how they want to distribute the funds, so it just.
Can I just maybe correct me if I'm wrong here, that these, this is not money given to, this is bonding capacity?
Correct.
And whoever uses these bonds still has to pay 67% of the interest of the bonds and the federal government or us as taxpayers pay the other 33%. Am I correct on that? This is not money coming from, this is bonding capacity coming from the federal government.
It's bonding capacity, which is, that is true. The cities and the county, there's no money involved, whatever, through those three entities. Nothing's coming out from us. This money, the reason it's a better deal for the companies is they're going to be able to have a tax exempt status on some of the, how that part of it works, but.
Well, my concern, and you know, this is where I think this, you know, our two representatives have to do is that, you know, issuing these bonds has to be on something that's income generation. If you issue bonds for stopgap measurements, for payroll and services that you're doing today, then you're in a position where you're actually hurting yourself later on. It's like trying to pay off a credit card with a credit card, because you didn't do anything. All you did is postpone it and it actually made it worse. And so that's my concern with these bonds and some of the stuff I see going on is not tax generation to go and pay for it, you're actually using your general funds that you would do to pay the interest on these, so it's kind of like where the State of Nevada's got themselves in trouble, is they borrowed themselves to cover their deficits for the last two sessions, and so there's a real opportunity here to do that with these bonds and so I'm just, I'm concerned that, you know, we make sure that these are, these bonds are used for actual revenue generation, new revenue generation and not covering up expenses that are present today.
They can't use it for that, they have to use it for a depreciable asset, so it has to be some form of construction where, and then they have to be able to pay the bond back.
See, and I guess a classic example's the school district. You know, so yeah, you build a school or you maintain a school or something with it, that's a great use of, temporary use of the money, but then you take it out of your income for the next 20 years, you're taking money out to go ahead and fund that payment, so you're borrowing against future debt is what you're doing and you're not generating new revenues to make it happen. That's where my concern falls at.
Okay.
And, you know, council can take that in as whatever direction they see fit with that. Thank you.
So let me be clear, Kathy, is the City of Sparks on the hook for any of these bonds?
Nobody is. The company who, if they, if their project is accepted.
It's a private company.
It's a private company and if their, if their project is accepted, they have to pay it back. We're just a conduit to allow them to and help them release the bonds. We don't have anything to do with it after that.
So the committee will just make those decisions on who gets it and who doesn't get it.
On one of the most viable income, whatever it is that they decide that they want to make is their judgment for how they want to decide who gets the project, that's how they'll decide.
Okay. Any other questions for Kathy? Not looking for a motion? Mr. Carrigan.
Move to approve the MOU.
Do you have a second? Mr. Schmidt.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve agenda item 6.2, the Memorandum of Understanding. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Try it again. Okay, I think we're there. Passage unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks Kathy. 6.3 Discussion and Possible Recommendations to the Regional Planning Governing Board Regarding Funding Level Alternatives for Fiscal Year 2010-11 and Fiscal Year 2011-12 Budgets of the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency. Armando.
Mayor Martini, members of the council, Armando and Ellis, City Planner. At the February 11th Regional Planning Governing Board meeting, regional planning staff presented their board with alternative budget scenarios that would reduce local governments' contributions for funding the agency by, from 5% to 20%. And as you may know or may recall, the way regional planning is funded is through an interlocal agreement between the three jurisdictions and basically Reno is responsible for 40% of the cost and Sparks and Washoe County are responsible for 30% each. At that meeting, Regional Planning Governing Board directed its staff to seek input from the local governments before they take up this budget matter again this coming Thursday at the, at the March 11th meeting. And so staff has brought forward this item to provide the Sparks City Council with the opportunity to discuss that budget and the work program and if you wish to provide Regional Planning Governing Board with comments or, and/or recommendations. On page two of the staff report, you'll see what Sparks contributions have been over the last three years and FY 2007-8, that amount was 400,000, $402,769 and that dropped by 10% in '08-'09, then by almost another 10% in '90-10. So in the current fiscal year, Sparks is contributing 327,552. Under the 5% to 20% alternatives, you'll see there on the bottom of that page also what the reduction would be in terms of the Sparks and by extension the Washoe County amounts would be, it'd be ranging from $311,198 at a 5% reduction to $262,062 at a 20% reduction. At the end of the day, the adoption of the Regional Planning Governing Board budget is the responsibility of the Regional Planning Governing Board, or the, I'm sorry, the TMRPA budget is responsible for the Regional Planning Governing Board, but this was initiated by Washoe County and so we're bringing it forward if you want to provide recommendations. For purposes of discussion, staff have recommended a 15% reduction in the contributions and then also, and in our view is equally important, would be that to the extent that the work program is to be revised and presumably cut in terms of its scope, that regional planning work with the staffs of the three jurisdictions in terms of determining, you know, what is to be cut, because there are some things that, you know, might be more of a priority to us than perhaps to others. So at any rate, those are the recommendations and if you have any questions, I'm available. Also here is Rosanna Coombs, who is the Director of the Regional Planning Agency, and I believe Joy Randall, who is the staffer who helped prepare the budget. So I don't know if Rosanna has any comments.
Rosanna, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. For the record, Rosanna Coombs, Director of Regional Planning. First of all, I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to be here and have this discussion with you and I concur with the synopsis that your staff have provided in terms of how the budget has come about and the process and the direction from the Governing Board in terms of seeking the input. And just a couple of additional points that I'd like to make. In terms of the situation for the other jurisdictions, I think it's probably important for you to understand the discussions that they've had or may potentially have, so that you have that as part of the context. The Board of County Commissioners did meet last week. Their staff provided a recommendation of 10% reductions in the budget. During the discussions, the, and through the recommendation or the motion from that board, they did concur with the 10% reduction, but also gave flexibility to their BCC members and to their staff in order to be able to negotiate an alternate outcome with other jurisdictions. I think they were a little concerned at simply making a hard and fast recommendation and then their members, once they got to the Governing Board, didn't have any flexibility to move. Obviously, your staff is making recommendations regarding 15% reductions and just received a copy of the Reno staff report and they're recommending 20% reductions. So it's kind of where my fear was in this whole process, is that each jurisdiction is looking at a different outcome and alternative, but I thought it was important that you understood that, so that you had that for your discussion. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the.
Questions for Rosanna or for Armando? Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Armando, how did you come up with 15%? What, you know, we've, I think if I recall, the Regional Government Board was very opposed to this coming in front of the council like this and then staff makes a recommendation of 15%. How did you come up with a recommendation of that?
Councilman Schmidt, I think the thought there was, was looking at the fact that there's been essentially 10% reduction due to the last two years. With this reduction, you know, I think the amount that would be saved for each of the jurisdictions would be, would start to approach a meaningful amount, in the case of the City of Sparks, I think it's about $49,000. And yet, I was cognizant of some of the comments made during the Regional Planning Governing Board meeting about a desire to minimize the reduction of regional planning staff and so frankly, it was, it was simply an attempt to try to strike a balance in terms of both having a meaningful reduction as well as minimizing the staff reductions at regional. Having said that, I think that amount is not a, or that percentage reduction is not a hard recommendation on the part of staff, it was simply a proposal that you could discuss.
As far as the last two years' reduction, you know, is it not true that those reductions came at ending fund balance? The reason why that the money came down on our contribution was because we took the money from ending fund balance and not reduction of cost?
Councilman Schmidt, I will defer to Ms. Coombs on that question. I was looking at simply the amount of the Sparks contribution and it looked like it reduced, it was reduced by that amount. If in fact that was possible because they were reducing the ending fund balance, then again, I would defer to Ms. Coombs on that question.
Go ahead, Rosanna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman, in terms of the operations of the agency, we have been reducing costs over time. We have a chart that we presented to the Governing Board that actually showed a graph with the reduction both in costs of staff and operating costs of the organization. So we have been reducing the costs of the organization. It just happens to be, in last fiscal year, where we actually had a staff member leave, we had some additional salary savings when the position was frozen. It provided us with an opportunity of some additional ending fund balance that we can contribute to next year's budget to help us out.
And I think that's why there are.
And I think that's why there are, we had a very healthy ending fund balance. We did not cut the agency by all that much money. I mean, we did have lower costs, but we also had a big savings account to go ahead and use, so. And, and I guess my, my concern is here is with this today, that it truly, really doesn't matter what decisions we make, it's immaterial to the whole process, because we only carried three out of 10 votes on it, and Washoe County and Reno can say and do whatever they want to. And I bring that on out because several years ago, we paid, over the course of a couple of years, over $3 million of taxpayer monies because two agencies were fighting with one another. We got sucked into it, and so this is not a $300,000-a-year problem. This is $300,000-a-year direct funds from general fund, and it's all of staff's time, and it's all the legal work, and it's all the lawyers we have to hire and everything over there. If you take our cost over the last 10 years of this, then it's probably in the neighborhood of $6, $7 million. This is an expensive government organization here. And, you know, it, I don't see where we're getting the benefit from the City of Sparks, because our cost percentage to our general fund is extremely 10 times higher than Reno and Washoe County. Washoe County pays the same $300,000, they have a $600,000-$700 million budget. We pay $300,000 on a $55 million budget. It's, it's no comparison here. I mean, the cost to our citizens is 10 times the cost to citizens in, in Reno and Washoe County, and I just, you know, I've, I've argued this for the last several years, that we're not getting the benefit of this based upon this structure, and so I, you know, you know, I think we need to really do some, some cost cutting here at this point.
Is that it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Rosanna. Thanks for coming today. You know, my opinion is that, and I've expressed this before, that we cut at about 67% to get our reduction, our amount down to about $100,000. But I'm not going to make that recommendation. I think our members of the, the Planning Commission, the three we have, appear should make that. But I would really like to see, we don't, they don't need to meet every month, whether it's when needed or on a quarterly basis. That would cut costs. And I just think it was, it's way too expensive for us at this time.
Anyone else? You know, it is kind of expensive, I understand that, but it's mandated, it's not, you know, we didn't choose to be in the, in the regional planning governing business. I mean, we have to because it's mandated by NRS, and so on and so forth. So, you know, and there are times that we do have to meet to address things like, like projects of regional significance. You know, I, and it's, it's tough to stomach sometimes we have to do that kind of stuff, but that's mandated by NRS, we have to do it. So I, there's, there's, it's not like we could just stop and not do it anymore. Mr. Carrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've been saying this for the whole time that I've been on the Regional Planning Governing Board about Sparks' share also. And I think what, you know, if you go back in the history of the Regional Planning Governing Board, what they did is the legislature said there's 10, 10 members on it, and this is how you'll split up the cost. Sparks gets three, so it's 30%. Washoe County gets three, so it's 30%. And like Ron said, I've been arguing the same point, 30, you know, the money to Reno and Washoe County is a lot different than the money from the City of Sparks. And this is why that we have to take care of this problem right now as far as, you know, the budget, because it comes out of a general fund. But we need to take a look at taking a penny of, and I've said this before, property tax, and saying, okay, one penny from the City of Sparks, one penny from Washoe County and Reno, because a penny is a penny. A penny to us is the same as a penny to the citizens in Reno, except that there's more of them, so it comes, their, their slice of the pie will be more, but it's equitable. So I'm going to be looking at trying to get the Regional Planning Governing Board to, you know, to buy off on that, to bring it back to the local entities and say, let's just do that. That's what we do with animal control. And we don't have to worry about it anymore. It's one penny, and this is what you get, and I think that's the way we need to handle this. But right now, the problem is, we need to figure out how much, you know, of a reduction we need, so. But maybe it's time to start talking about that, because it looks like it's the right time again, so we'll go ahead and handle that down the road.
Ms. Ratty?
Yeah, I just, having not served on the governing board, I just want a clarification. So the way it's set up, allocated with the representation on the board, is that allocated in the NRS statute, or in the, okay, so to change that, we would have to go to the legislature and ask to have it changed, or no?
Yeah, you'd have to ask to get that changed, but the way it's funded is strictly up to the Regional Planning Governing Board. That process came down and...
How much money is...
Right, right.
But the allocation...
The allocation was set up by the NRS.
Okay. So I guess, in terms of today's discussion, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding. In terms of today's discussion, if the, if the amount of money was significantly reduced, the perceived inequity between the three jurisdictions would still be the same, it would just be a lower amount?
Right.
Okay. So I, I need to be clear on that.
Yeah, I think the thing, we, we brought it back to all the entities, because there's, there was anywhere from a 5% to a 20% reduction. And we wanted the, the respective councils and commission to say, what do you think is fair to do? And I think Washoe County said 10%, I think, at their meeting, with the ability to negotiate.
Correct.
Reno's looking at 20%. I'm sure they're going to say with the, you know, the ability to negotiate, and ours is 15%. And I think we could throw that into our motion, that we can negotiate also.
Yeah, and when it comes to the certain number of meetings we have to have and all that things, there's certain things that are mandated by the NRS statutes, like updating the regional plan every five years. That's something we have to do. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just go ahead and talk to the council a little bit about some of my reasons why I felt that coming here was inappropriate for the Regional Governing Board to do that, is that, you know, when, when I first became elected, and I sat down and was appointed to that board, I sat down with both attorneys from the city and from the attorneys from the Regional Governing Board. It was very clear by their presentation to me that these are two totally separate entities, that actions carried from one does not carry over to the other. In fact, they're so different that our laws for, for voting are different than their laws for voting. They don't fall under the same NRS statutes that we fall under. And I see Doug shaking his head, so it sounds like that so far, everybody's in agreement on this. That we can't be bound, the three members from the Regional Governing Board can't be bound by a council decision. And we don't take everything to the council, nor do the council go to the regional governing and deal with that. And I felt that it was, was inappropriate for this discussion to be taking place here, because you've empowered three representatives to sit down and make those discussions. To have this discussion come here means that we now have another government body that's coming in front of another government body to make policy decision at a council meeting. And I felt that that was inappropriate. The attorneys were very clear that, you know, that wasn't the way things were done, and I, and I think that being here today is, is, we shouldn't be here. We shouldn't be making recommendations on this. You know, we can make recommendations forward to the three members of the governing body to do what they think best, but to have a council vote, I think is, is, is inappropriate on this, because it is two different governing bodies.
Mr. Ornelas?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and we certainly were aware that this was, in a sense, new territory, and so one of the alternatives that staff offers is simply not to offer comments or recommendations to the Regional Planning Governing Board, and simply rely on your representatives on that board to, to, to act as, as a main, the context of that board, too.
You know, I, I think we do that on a, on a, on a regular basis. I mean, I don't have a problem discussing it here today, just to let everyone on the, on the council know what we're facing at regional planning, just like everybody else is. I don't know that they always get the reports or whatever from regional planning, so I don't have a mind, I don't have a problem discussing it, but, you know, just to leave us to us three, Ron and myself and Mike Carrigan on the board, and we don't discuss normally any other decisions that are made, but I thought it was appropriate to let them know about this in advance. Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, and I also think, you know, because, I think funding is different than legislating, because this comes out of our general fund, and I think everybody on the city council has an input on that. So when we're, and the reason I have no problem bringing it back is because when we sit there and take a look at our, our budget, we automatically cut out $367,000 and say, you can't touch that, because it goes to Regional Planning Governing Board. And so I, I think, you know, this whole, this whole council makes the decision on the budget, so that's why I have no problem bringing it back. I agree with Ron, though. We haven't brought any other things back, because we are an own, its own government agency, so it gets kind of tough. And anybody here that wishes to make any decision on the Regional Planning Governing Board can step up and take my place if they wish. But that's, I've thrown that out every year for 10 years, and I never get anybody to bite on it, so. But anyway, so I think it is appropriate to bring it back.
Not today either, Mike.
All right. Any further discussion? Is, we can take what we got to the bank, and does anybody want to make a motion? Are you comfortable with what the three that, that represent the Sparks on the governing board are willing to do? Ms. Ratty?
Particularly given the feedback from the two other entities, with one coming in in 10 and the other one coming in at 20, clearly there's going to be, and we're dead in the middle, clearly there's going to be a meaningful discussion that happens at the governing board level, and so therefore, I'm perfectly happy to have the three of you represent us and make the best decision that you think benefits the City of Sparks.
Anyone else? Okay. Just let her ride. Thanks. Thanks, Rosanna. Thanks, Joy. Do you, you want us to take action? Do we need to take action? No. Yeah, good. Okay, 6.4, Consideration and Possible Direction to Initiate a Code Amendment to Create a BP, Business Park Zoning Designation. Anybody doing this? Everybody's looking at each other, so. Straight from Yarrington, Mr. Rundle, what's going on? Did I catch you asleep back there, or what?
Maybe.
Jim Rundle, Senior Planner.
No, 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 anything. He's good.
No. You guys talked enough the last item. The, the request here is to ask the council to allow us to work on a BP, or Employment Zoning Designation. Councilman Smith asked us to bring this to the council, to have it voted on. This would be a designation that you're familiar with, that we're using in Kylie Ranch or Pioneer Meadows. But the reason we can use it already out there is those are zone PD, Plan Development, so we did it through the handbook. In the East Truckee River Canyon, we may need to use the designation for, for projects so that we don't have to do handbooks. In the East Truckee River Canyon, people can come in and, and receive the Business Park Designation and not have to do a handbook. So that's what we're asking the council to allow us to move forward with researching and developing a zoning designation.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Rundle? Ms. Ratty?
As part of your analysis, will you look to see if adult daycare is appropriate in the Business Park Designation?
We can, we can look to see if that's appropriate, sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have a Business Park Designation right now?
We have a Business Park Master Pond Designation, but not zoning.
Not zoning. Then, when we just consolidated all of our, our designations, was that for zoning, or was that for a master plan?
That was, that's for master plan.
So we, we reduce all that, we have a Business Park in, in Master Pond, and now we're just asking to put a Business Park in zoning?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Questions for Jim? Okay, if not, looking for a motion? Mr. Smith?
I move to direct staff to initiate a code amendment to Title 20, the zoning code of the municipal code, to create a Business Park Zoning Designation BP, and providing other matters properly relating thereto.
Mr. Salerno?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Salerno, who approves 6.4 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it. 6.5, PCN 09019, Review with Possible Approval for the Final Amended Handbook for the Foothills at Wingfield Springs Plan Development. Ms. Jaguar, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Before you this afternoon is the final handbook amendment for the Foothills at Wingfield Springs Plan Development. And there have been no changes to the handbook from the tentative approval to the final submittal, so based on the requirements listed in Sparks Municipal Code, the final handbook has been determined to be in substantial compliance with the tentative approved handbook, so Planning Commission and staff are recommending approval, and I'm available for questions.
Questions on 6.5, Ms. Jaguar? Mr. Carrigan?
On this one right here, the only change is that they're, we're putting in a school designation, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's the...
They, they also have, with that designation, they also have design standards...
Right.
...that go with that, and some elevations also proposed in that.
Okay. I'll move to approve the final handbook for the Foothills at Wingfield Springs Plan Development, PCN 09019, based on the facts supported in the staff report.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Okay, 6.5, moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve PCN 09019. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Ms. Cherie? 6.6 is the first reading.
Bill Number 2616, An Ordnance Amending Chapter 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to Regulate Adult Daycare Businesses and Provide Other Matters Properly Related There Too.
This is the first reading of Bill Number 2616. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, March 22nd, 2010. 6.7 is the first reading.
Bill Number 2617, An Ordnance Amending Chapter 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to Permit and Regulate Renewable Energy Production and Providing Other Matters Properly Related There Too.
This is the first reading of Bill Number 2617. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, March 22nd, 2010. 6.8, Report on Washoe County Fire Services Studies. Mr. Flock? Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the council, for the record, Andy Flock, Fire Chief. Today, I'm here to report on two Washoe County Fire Services Studies. The first is the Description of Fire Service Deployment Assets Conducted by Emergency Services Incorporated, which was done in March of 2008. The second is the Fire and Firebase DMS Master Plan conducted by Diamonic Public Sector Group, which was conducted in 2009. The first, I provided support to the Washoe County in their efforts to produce these documents. And these do provide valuable information to all the fire agencies within Washoe County, as well as yourselves as council members. The first study provided a snapshot of all the risks within Washoe County that we have, and the resources that are out there and available to mitigate these risks. The study, it cost $22,000 and was paid for by Washoe County, and had no financial impact to the City of Sparks, other than staff time. The scope of the project, the project was designed to provide a description of the capacity of fire suppression operations of the fire agencies within Washoe County, Nevada. The scope of this project involved the following: project initiation, data request, community risk assessment to extrapolate population and growth scenarios, and describe deployment level of emergency services. Factors to be considered include station locations, current, station typification, station locations proposed, staffing level by type of alarm, including initial arriving resources and full assignment resources, concentration of resources, effective response force polygons, optimized response zones based on current locations, and a couple of This report describes elements of risk hazard and values, the physical locations of all existing facilities, current resources, and the staffing configuration employed by participating agencies, response patterns, and the widespread use of automatic aid. The report describes elements of growth potential that currently exist. Some of the items that they look at, they looked at travel times used in this study, but they were based on a, on the concept, on the concept of distribution. They also used, looked at capital asset analysis, looking at facilities, their location, age, condition, serviceability, staffing needing, staffing needs, and response and travel goals. They also looked at the apparatus and vehicles, their age, condition, serviceability, distribution and deployment, regulations, compliance, and support equipment, to name a few. Financial data was also included. The information was collected from Washoe County to determine the underlying assessed value of the areas being protected within the county. This data was placed in an Excel spreadsheet, and a series of charts and graphs was developed to illustrate the range and distribution of the various characteristics and attributes being observed, and you've been provided that data. being observed, and you've been provided that data in the PDF file that you were sent. The document also provides a table for assessing land use against response needs, as well as a number of the description of published, nationally recognized standards that are out there for use. A whole host of maps were provided, which provide visual assessment of the deployment of risks, resources, and responses, items such as fire station locations, population density, appraised value, the insurance service organization needed fire flows, and I found it interesting that Sparks has some of the highest required fire flows by incidents from the year 2006, also various travel times, the insurance service organization one and a half mile travel time, as well as the four minute and eight minute response times we use for initial arrival and first alarm assignment arrival, as well as an automatic aid matrix and maps for that. It also discusses triggers, transitions, and threshold methodology for future fire station location, increasing engine company complements and staffing levels. Some of the observations from this study first had to do with some dispatch times. There were some items needing attention in ECOM, the Reno/Washoe County Dispatch System. My understanding is those have now been rectified, and we'll discuss that a little bit further in the other study. It wasn't, they basically commented on collaborative process. It is clearly present in this study area, otherwise there would not be the widespread use of automatic aid. The recommendation was to maintain the baseline of this study, a triennial cycle would be used for review, and then to monitor its process. The analysis of the study is this report is nonjudgmental in its findings. This report does describe elements of risk hazard and values, the physical locations of all existing facilities, current resources and the staffing configuration employed by participating agencies, response pants, and the widespread use of automatic aid. This report is essentially a baseline study for future considerations in the revision of operational capabilities. The report does describe elements of growth potential that currently exist, but makes no efforts to predict the timeframes in which that might occur. That's the completion of that study. If you have questions on that one, I'll be happy to answer and move on to the next.
Questions? Okay, move on. Thanks.
The next study is the Washoe County Fire and Firebase DMS Master Plan evaluated, it evaluated the Fire and Firebase Emergency Medical Services in the unincorporated areas of Washoe County. I provided support to Washoe County for this process as well, although involvement was limited to one interview and access to dispatch and records. This study also provides valuable information that it provides insight into agencies that we have working relationships with. The study points out key operational issues and makes recommendations to improve efficiencies. This allowed me also to take a reflective approach on the services that we currently provide and seek areas for improvement, in particular fractile response times. We've collected that data for a number of years, and the quarterly statistics I provide you typically report in averages. We're working now, one of my division chiefs, Tom Garrison, Division Chief Administration, almost has the process down where we'll report in fractile response times to ensure we're compliant with those nationally recognized standards. And then also, we need to monitor the outcomes of the emergency, emergency medical dispatch proposal within the plan. The cost for the study was $80,000, so it was no cost to the city of Sparks, only some staff time. The scope of the project was to develop a comprehensive Fire and Firebase Emergency Medical Services Master Plan that consisted of an assessment and review of existing Fire and Firebase EMS operations in the unincorporated area excluding the cities of Reno and Sparks as well as the North Tahoe Fire Protection District. Secondly, a series of recommended methods for improving and or enhancing existed Fire and Firebase EMS delivery in the unincorporated areas of Washoe County. The methodology and approach that was used, the recommendation is development of the master plan was organized into five focused task groups or themes to ensure all sections of the project's scope were addressed: fire suppression operations, fire prevention, Firebase EMS, administration management and governance, as well as financial structure and impacts. Engagement of local and agency stakeholders, federal organizations, and the private sector as well as the community was a cornerstone to this effort. The summary and key issues which you provided in your staff report discuss redundancies in governments, training, and many other inefficient response to fire and fire assisted EMS calls. It required, or recommended to establish a unified single fire agency through the establishment of a joint powers authority governance model that included the city of Reno, Fire Department, Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, and the Sierra Fire Protection District via consolidation. The second issue was an identified need for a new fire station in Arrow Creek. The recommendation was that after a JPA was formed, that there would be a comprehensive fire station location study and that they felt two fire companies could be relocated to accommodate this. Another issue was the effectiveness of regional EMS delivery and fire service integration. A, recommendation, commission, a study to reevaluate and assess the Washoe County EMS delivery system. This study should review the parameters of the existing franchise agreement, which in its current form provides a lot of flexibility for fire agency input or participation. Or B, initiate discussions with the Washoe County Board of Health to develop a joint venture with its public safety partners, particularly the fire agencies, develop a new approach for EMS delivery to consider including Firebase Paramedic Services. Each of these also has a fiscal impact and a timeline that is in your staff report. Another issue was the effectiveness of regional EMS delivery and fire service integration. They discussed the implementation of enhanced emergency medical dispatch at Washoe Reno 911 ECOM. Another issue was the inability to assess performance due to the lack of dispatch information, and that's the item I believe that they've corrected over there. A, they talk about adopting a response time policy for all fire departments governed by the Board of Commissioners that is consistent with the applicable national standards. B, to report response times and fractile response time method. C, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners should initiate discussions with ECOM and the Reno City Fire Department to implement a dispatch RMS system capable of tracking emergency responses by census tract, fractile response times, geocodes, and mobile data terminals for all apparatus and continuous quality improvement. Another issue was the need for additional support and integration of volunteer fire companies. I've spoken with Pete Canizero, the president of the Washoe County Volunteer Firefighters' Firemen's Association. He feels they've made some great strides in, in this particular issue. The next issue is that they felt they need to be more aggressive in seeking out some additional grant funding. Couple of additional items, as I went through the report that I, that were of interest, was an assessment analysis with Washoe County's three 911 PSAP dispatch centers, ECOM, Sparks, and Incline. The close coordination of public safety resources can become very complicated. Moving toward a single emergency dispatch operation at ECOM not only increases operational efficiencies and reduces flaws, but provides for fully utilizing this modern E911 facility, equipment, computer, dispatch functionality, and staff. Another recommendation was to commission a study with Washoe County, the city of Reno, the city of Sparks, REMZA, and ECOM to study an approved approach that would provide for the primary public safety dispatcher to evaluate the caller utilizing a recognized and approved emergency medical dispatch system. And then the last recommendation had to do with fire prevention area, talked about adopting the International Residential Building Code that incorporates the requirement of automatic residential fire sprinklers in all new homes, and then the local adoption of an automatic residential fire sprinkler, or B would be a local adoption of an automatic residential fire sprinkler ordinance that includes new construction and retrofitting of residential sprinklers in homes during major retrofitting or upgrades. So what are the next steps? Some of the next steps, I've attended a number of meetings. On February 22nd, 2010, I attended a special meeting of the Washoe County Board of Commissioners, Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District and the Sierra Fire Protection District. Presentation was given by the Diamani Group at that time. Questions arose regarding the proposal for a JPA and whether this is the ideal form of governance. Also in question was the co-mingling of funds and assurances that services provided were commensurate with the revenues provided for existing fire districts. The belief by some was that consolidation of maybe Sierra Fire and Truckee Meadows Fire might be a better fit. On February 23rd, 2010, I attended a county commission meeting that sought a decision to accept the plan. Again, there was some question whether consolidation of Sierra Fire and Truckee Meadows might be a better fit as a standalone Washoe County Fire Department. The commission felt an action plan was more appropriate as there was not overwhelming support to implement the plan as was recommended by the Fire Services Coordinator. It was decided to accept the study, consider looking at a unified governments versus JPA, and to complete an action plan by March 31st, brought to the first commission meeting in April. A task force was assembled, which I was invited to, to develop an action plan beginning on April 3rd, 2010. I was invited as a member of this task group along with several other fire chiefs, the Washoe County District Health Officer, a citizen, and a union representative. The recommended motion I have for this item is to move to approve continued participation and assistance, as I feel that this provides us some valuable information with the Washoe County Fire Services Studies to include reports to the council on impacts to Washoe County and the city of Sparks, and to be consistent with your previous policy direction to exclude consolidation as an option.
Questions, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief. 9/11 or 911 calls, they know, they now go to Sparks if they originate in Sparks, right? There was a problem before that.
That's correct. All 911 calls come into the, what they call the PSAPS.
And then they, and they call REMZA, whoever needs, they pass it on, right?
That's correct. The dispatcher will ask if it's, if it's fire, medical, or police, and if it's medical, she will get some basic information and then transfer that call to, to REMZA.
Okay, the Diamani report was, was scoped to check out current fire station locations or future, that was part of their scope?
That was the fires, that was the first study. That was the description of fire service deployment assets. The Diamani study did that as well, but it didn't do that for all of Washoe County, which is what the deployment assets...
Well, that's my point. What did they say about station number five?
They didn't make a judgment on, on whether stations were actually in the right locations or not. It was a nonjudgmental study, as I stated, but they did feel for the most part that the, the stations within Washoe County were in the right locations.
But wasn't this report mostly done in the county? Wasn't done in the city of Sparks?
This one here was done in the entire city of Sparks.
The Diamanti?
No, no, this is...
Okay, well, that's what I'm talking about right now. That was, and they even recommend that the Sierra Fire, Truckee Meadows Fire District would be better consolidated with, with the county, right?
That's the Diamani study.
That's the, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
The Diamani study. And so they didn't study station number five or station number one. All their recommendations were in the county, not in Sparks.
Yeah, the study, the scope of, of the study was in the unincorporated areas of Washoe County. They did not study the city of Sparks, city of Reno, or the North Lake Tahoe Fire Protection District.
So I guess I'm wondering how we went from a study done in Washoe County to all of a sudden we want to create our own fire district? How did that happen?
Well, you say "we."
Okay, let's, let's talk to firefighters' union.
Okay, firefighters' union.
How did, how did it get from a study in Washoe County to our firefighters wanting to establish...
There was a presentation made at the consolidated meeting with county commissioners, the Sierra Fire Protection Board and Truckee Fire Protection Board, when the Diamani study made their President Kavanaugh, city of Sparks, came up as a presenter for Reno, Sparks, Truckee Meadows, Sierra Fire Protection, and the Airport Authority.
I read his presentation.
Okay. And I would hate to paraphrase that.
Okay, no, I read it and I, and I saw it, and I'm just wondering if the fire department now sets policy for the city of Sparks?
No, the fire department receives policy direction from you.
Okay, and our policy direction is we do what our citizens say, and, and every year they say that we do not want to consolidate fire. Have you read that?
I have read that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Salerno.
Yeah, Chief. You kept referring to the, one issue was the inability to assess performance due to the lack of dispatch information.
That's correct.
That have to do with being on the same...
It added to, if you will, the atomic clock. It was explained to me the way the information was coming into ECOM, they were getting information transferred in from Sierra Fire Protection District, some from up in the lake, and then Reno Fire. They weren't all working off the same clock, is the way it was explained to me. They're now all on the same, if you will, atomic clock so that the, the time that is being entered into this system is, is accurate, and now they can, they can draw that data out. Everybody's reading off the same page.
So they're all getting the same information at the same time?
That's correct.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, thanks for coming and giving the presentation today. I appreciate it. I just want to... Reading of the report, the report only talks about two agencies that this whole thing started about. Is the consolidated fire department already between Washoe County Reno and Sierra Fire District? Is that correct?
That's correct. That was the recommendation of the Diamani study, is that those three agencies be consolidated.
And somewhere in this process, things went way differently that, you know, was the reason why we're here today.
I think in a number of ways, there were comments made outside the scope of work, including some of the facilitators that I've worked with.
And, and I guess this is the, I mean, I think there's a lesson to be learned from consolidation here, that never happens the way everybody thinks it does, because 10 years later, we just got sucked into another government agency's consolidation, whether, you know, who wants to be blamed, it doesn't make any difference on it. We're there now. We're, we're now sucked into this, this, this whole issue, and we have to deal with it in the best manner possible. I, for one, say that if we've got new ideas out there on the table that we can save money and the citizens a better service, let's, let's, let's take a look at it. But, you know, I, I think that the format that's been taken here, and I'll follow up with, with Mr. Smith's question, is that for three years and twice, the city council has voted on consolidation, and it said we will look at, you know, working with services and things, but consolidation was out of the question. How we got to that information was just not through our citizens, but it was through in-depth talking of all of our department heads, our employees, you know, the family of the city of Sparks employees did not want to consolidate, they wanted to maintain their identities. We continued to work on cost-saving measures internally, and one day I opened up the electronic version of the Reno Gazette Journal while I'm back on the east coast someplace, somewhere, and I found out that one of our family members had decided that they've got a new idea, and they just presented it to another government body agency, and we didn't know what was going on. So now we're asked, two weeks later, to sit and vote saying to authorize to move forward with, you know, the talks and the study, which we really didn't get till last week anyway, and, and move forward like nothing ever happened. And I think that for all members, you know, the city council, whoever's involved, the departments and everything, because you have the police department in this, you know, when you just start talking 911, they're the 911 operators in this city, so we're not just talking to the fire department, we're talking several departments. You know, I say, timeout here. You know, timeout. Let's sit down and let's start talking about what are the issues on out there? What are you trying to accomplish? You know, we have another government agency, another government study, another government's problem that now we're involved in. If you want to be involved in that problem, I think the appropriate conversations need to take place, and not just saying, you know, vote and allow us to go ahead and talk about these issues with another government agency, with another consolidation group, with another study on out there, because that conversation happens right here. It happens right here before it happens anywhere else. If it happens somewhere else first, before it happens here, which that's the case, then we end up in these, these very, very, very tough situations. So before, my recommendation is that we, we don't vote on that measure, we don't vote on continuing forward. If other groups wanted to go forward, that's, that's, they obviously have the right to, but the conversation needs to happen at this level in this jurisdiction with our employees and this council first. And then once that conversation happens, if there's a real impasse or we can't reach concession on what to do, because if we're going to open this on up to other models of fire thing, then I think we need to open it up to all models, including the ones that the council brings forward, as well as other employees, as well as other groups out there that may be on out there, to say that this is the right model now, let's go forward with this without any input, I think is inappropriate. And I'm hard-pressed to find anybody who thinks that this is not inappropriate for us to have these conversations before we move forward. And so I'm opposed to making a motion here today to go ahead and allow this discussion to take place, since this is the first meeting we've ever had this discussion.
You do have an alternative within your staff report, that city council can deny continued participation and assistance with Washoe County Fire Services and pull out altogether.
Mr. Kerrigan.
You know, I was going to ask a different question, but that's kind of like, you know, once again, we have a gun to our head, you know, because now if you, what you just said, if we don't go along with that, then it's going to look like we're not, you know, I agree with, I agree with Ron. You know, first of all, let's have this discussion with the leaders of the city first, before we decide if we're going to go outside of the city. That wasn't even the question I was going to ask, I just kind of made you mad. But I was going to ask about the two fire, you know, when they did the study, Sierra Fire Protec... Fire Protection, and what's the other one? Do they both have fire districts?
That's correct.
Okay, why don't you explain, because everybody that's watching probably doesn't understand about a fire district. Why don't you understand, explain real quick, especially the money part, how a fire district works?
Fire Protection District is typically a 474 or 473 interest setup statutorily. They have their own tax base, primarily property tax, but they do have some sales tax revenue in there as well. They don't compete for general fund monies, they have to monitor their own tax base. They have their own board, if you will, that they have to report to, that they report both financial and operational issues to.
Okay, great. And you just, and I wanted to put that on the record, and you mentioned two things that really upset most citizens in Sparks. One, it's going to cost you more, because it's a different tax. In other words, your tax isn't going to go down. They're not, we're not going to, if, let's just say we're paying 364, they're not going to cut out four cents and say, oh, okay, this goes to a fire district, above and beyond what we already pay into the general fund. And the other thing is another level of government, because you have another board that takes care of that. So I'm glad, that's, I wanted to put on the record, because there's, it's a lot different when you're working with a fire district than it is when you have a fire department that comes underneath the general fund of a city, or a county, or state, actually. So just want to put that on the record.
Ms. Ratty?
I appreciate the comments from the rest of the council, and I would like to throw out a slightly different perspective. Similar to the conversation that we had earlier about the Regional Governing Planning Board and the very separate government agency, and how we send representatives off to another agency to represent the needs of the city of Sparks, there's some parts of the DiAmani study that refer specifically to the emergency medical services system. And as you all are well aware, the emergency medical system falls under the governance of the Board of Health. For me, I would like to see Chief Flock, and I think that's what we're talking about here, right, is not the city as a whole, it might be you and some of your staff, continuing to participate in the process. I personally would like to see them continue to participate in the process on the very specific issue of, then I get meaningful information from our staff in terms of their perspective on a conversation on a board that I represent the city on. And there, one of the places that the DiAmani report did perhaps bleed out of the original scope, which was, of course, supposed to be just a Washoe County only study, is really talking about emergency medical dispatch. There's some specific recommendations in the report where Sparks, particularly dispatch, Sparks is particularly named, and this would go to the chief of police, too. I think if this is moving forward, and we're talking about getting to a place where ECOM is handling emergency medical dispatch one way, our PSAP is handing it another way, North Lake Tahoe might be handling it another way, and we have REMZA in the picture with their dispatch center, then we start getting to a place where the Board of Health is obviously going to have some input and want to have some say about that as well. So it's helpful for me, in my role on the Board of Health, to have somebody that is thinking about the interests of Sparks participating in that process. I think we've been very clear, from a policy standpoint, on the consolidation pieces. I trust Chief Flock to participate in that spirit, and having you at the table is helpful to me.
I would agree. My job is to look out for the best interests of the city of Sparks, and there's some implications to these studies that may be an unintended consequence to the city of Sparks, and it is important for us to sit at the table, and for me to report to you on what those unintended consequences may be.
That would be where I would come from, too, Chief, is to have you at the table representing us, and again, I trust you, like Julia said, I trust you and your judgment on consolidation, not interested in that. But I think we need to have someone there watching out for our best interest, because if you don't, we get sucked into things that we don't want to get sucked into without even knowing it, so that would be my preference. Questions, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, you know, and you're absolutely correct, that, you know, EMS portion of it is something we need to seriously take a look at. How would you frame a motion, then, to allow Chief Flock to go ahead and stay with the group and, as you pointed out, very specific topic?
Councilmember, if I might, in these studies, not only myself, but one of the other fire chiefs have made it very clear of the policy direction of the city of Sparks. And I do make that very clear when I'm a part of these, whether they're task groups or other types of situations where I'm allowed to either observe and report or participate in report, my direction is very clear from you. You set the policy, I do not.
I guess my question, then, is if that's the case, why are we here?
I'll certainly give that a try. This particular study grew out of very critical problems in Washoe County and the interface that they have with the districts, and their reliance upon service with the city of Reno, and the service contract between the Reno Fires Department to provide service to Washoe County's Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District is on a very critical timeline for it to be renewed or changed. And I think the county commissioners have acted in the best interests of their district residents in both the Truckee Meadows District and the Sierra District to undertake proper studies to allow them, as a commission, to begin a process of looking at the best way to represent their constituents in the future. In that we are a part of Washoe County and a very critical service provider in fire, we have been making sure that the facts and the information and the input from our chief has been provided. It was very late in this process, going into the county commission meetings, just a little over two weeks ago, that the idea was put forth by union representation on a broad base, not just the Sparks Fire Department, that there were opportunities here that could improve service if we looked to other models. That was not part of the scope of work, and it was not something that had been vetted to that point. I think the opportunity to keep our chief at the table, studying and reporting back on what these outcomes are that have been studied, is important and would provide you critical information. What I did not want to see was an investment of very critical resources into consolidation, which is something that was on the very front page of the newspaper. It's not something that we properly vetted to this point in these studies, and would say that we would be asked to expend considerable time and effort by this chief and members of the department studying those issues. And the issue of consolidation consumes resources without ever really deciding what are the inputs that are needed for our city to find success. Now, in 100 and years, we have always had our fire department part of our emergency response, and we do that with police, fire, public works. In the last 18 years, I can recall three presidentially declared disasters, and we do require resources from outside our community to be successful in those events. But we have not relinquished a very vital service, such as our fire department, to the decision-making of others. And I think our community has benefited from having a successful, full range of services that you balance on a budget basis. And it's this question of consolidation that I wanted to make sure that the council looked at today, so that we were clear as staff in moving forward, that we didn't want, at this point in our position with our budget and with all of the reduced staff that we have, to expend the time and resources in this area of consolidation. We have a shared services team, which chose, you know, looked at a number of consolidation opportunities, are in progress with some in the areas of HR, purchasing, and IT, and we also have mandated reports back to the legislature specifically on public safety, public works, and general government. But this would, I believe, break the spirit of your policy direction to begin working on consolidation. And right at this point, I think it's important for you to set a direction that confirms that you're not wanting, at this time with our resources, to go down this path, but we should remain open, as your resolution states, to looking at those opportunities to improve our service. And the example of EMS is right on point. Another one that's very important that we stay at the table, does not involve EMS, but does involve automatic aid. The boundaries of our city require us to, you provide service into unincorporated islands within our city, requires us to do an awful lot of service down the canyon onto Interstate 80, and we rely upon help from other departments as well. And so I think those questions, both in fire and EMS, we can benefit from in being part of the study. And I think for Washoe County and the city of Reno, they can focus on their critical service and cost equations that are important to them. So I think your action today is critical and timely, so that we can continue to look for the best way to provide the Sparks Fire Department services to our residents now and in the future, and also to defray what I feel would be a use of resources and time that's better spent on other issues rather than pursuing consolidation. And that's why I believe this is important for you to act on today.
You may not get a chance. Ms. Ratty?
I think from a practical standpoint, that the motion, as it's presented, accomplishes that. You know, I'm just trying to get down to the real nuts and bolts, so you're invited to be on, you've been invited to sit as a committee member, is that?
It was actually set up as a task group.
A task group.
Yeah, there was no voting or consensus voting or anything like that, that was very clear. There were recommendations made for a number of the topics. Some I weighed in on, the EMS issues, some I chose not to weigh in on, but I felt it was important for me to be there so that I could understand the whole scope of the process and report back to you, and like I said, look out for the interests of the city of Sparks.
And moving forward, I would expect the approach to be the same. And so I think that the motion, which says that we move to approve continued participation and assistance with the Washoe County Fire Services Studies to include reports to city councils on impacts of Washoe County and the city of Sparks, and exclude consolidation as an option, gets us there.
Does.
So I'll make that a motion.
Do we have a second for discussion?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith for discussion. Questions, Mr. Smith?
Well, Chief, I know that you didn't present the consolidation part to the commission, it was the firefighters' union that did that. They also said that they would be willing to do anything to make sure this happens. Well, that's not our policy, so where do we go from here?
I can't deny that statement.
Well, that statement was in the paper.
I want to be fair to.
It had to be right.
I want to be fair to our employees in the fire department that are members of the union, that the letter was from the Sierra Firefighters Association, which is a group that is, you know, there for the purposes of assessing and looking at what's occurring. So it wasn't.
Who's it represented by, Sean?
It is represented by Kevin Kavanaugh.
Okay, could I ask Kevin that question?
Do you want to respond, Mr. Kavanaugh? Do you got another question, or do you want to wait for this?
I'm sorry, can you rephrase the question?
When you did your presentation, including that presentation, was a comment that said that you would be willing to do whatever it takes to make this consolidation happen, to make the fire district happen?
You were provided with a copy of it, weren't you?
I was, yes.
I have it right here. It says, we will be willing.
Yeah, no, would you read the whole thing for me? I never did see it.
It says, we will be willing to help and work with you to facilitate.
What does that mean?
It doesn't say we'll do anything.
What does that mean?
That.
Does that mean you go against the council's policy, that we don't want to consolidate? We're not interested in it?
The council sets the policy for the city of Sparks. I was representing professional firefighters of Washoe County, and we get to set our policy.
How about for the city of Sparks?
No, you reserve the right to set the policy for the city of Sparks.
Okay, so you're not representing the city of Sparks firefighters when you go to these meetings?
I was representing the professional firefighters of Washoe County.
Which includes the city of Sparks?
Which includes the city of Sparks professional firefighters, Local 1265.
Mr. Carrigan?
Okay, I'm confused. Where does, let's just cut it to the chase. Where do the union in Sparks sit on consolidation?
The union voted overwhelmingly to support consolidation.
Okay, so we're in an impasse right now, because we're setting policy saying we don't want to talk about consolidation, and your union set policy saying that you do want to talk about consolidation?
Correct.
Okay, so where do we go from here?
I would ask.
Who sets the policy?
I would ask that the county realistically look at the evaluation of the possibility of something might better be out there, and that the council be open-minded and look at just the possibility.
Okay, can I tell you, we get our running orders from the voters of this city, okay? They have overwhelmingly said in the last 10 years that I've been on the city council, not to consolidate three things: fire, police, and government. And that's what we put in a resolution, and that's what we said. So we are setting a policy to say we don't want to even talk about consolidation, because that's the way the citizens want it. So, but you're saying that your union is going to sit there, and doesn't matter what we say up here, you're going to go as a union and say, we're going to study consolidation, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I get to my question, do you understand what this does to the city of Sparks? I mean, it not only sets problems with internal of our city of Sparks, but you just spoke very loudly on the record for state legislatures to do whatever they want to do to the city. You, and I just, I want you to think, just beyond the comments and everything else like that, and I understand that, you know, you play in a political world, we play in a political world, I can guarantee you, your statements are going to be read in the legislative session, and it's going to butcher this city apart and every single department coming up. And that's just, I just want you to think about that, what's happened here. My other question I have, and Chief, this is one of the things that came on a memo last week, was that these meetings do not have to comply with the open meeting law, that people can get together and discuss this and whatever they want to do. That was the memo that came out from Washoe County. I'm asking that these meetings, if we go this route, that they all be, comply to the open meeting law, so everybody has a chance, they get to be posted, the citizens get to say what they want to do, elected officials get to know, we'll get more than two hours' notice that a meeting's happening. That's what I'd like to request on this, is that this process get to the public, so the public knows what's going on, that it's just not, oh, we're going to have a meeting, and these only seven or eight people get to know about it, and then, you know, these are taxpayers' money being spent here, they have the right to know what's going on.
With all due respect, Councilman, as I, just as I don't get to set policy here, I don't get to set policy with the county. That was a staff study session. Those guidelines were set by the county. I can make that recommendation, but that task group did allow for, not necessarily open meeting, but anybody was allowed to attend.
We didn't get notified until the morning of, you know, the meeting was happening, and we didn't get notified of all these other meetings. You know, elected officials would have to deal with these issues, nobody, well, I don't know who, but I'm not, I'm not aware of anybody on this council that knew about it or our own staff until after the meeting happened.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion on the floor. Does everyone understand the motion? It's been seconded.
Can you repeat that motion?
You want to repeat your motion, Ms. Ratty? I think it's the one that's stated in there.
Move to approve continued participation and assistance with the Washoe County Fire Services Studies to include reports to the city council on impacts to Washoe County and the city of Sparks, and exclude consolidation as an option.
Mr. Smith?
I would throw my second.
Okay. Mr. Carrigan?
Julie, read that one more time for me, because I got a question, and it slipped out, I was going to ask something, if you don't mind. I don't mind.
Okay, but after this meeting, y'all are going to have to keep up with me.
Okay.
Sorry, I was so slow.
That's okay. Move to approve continued participation and assistance with the Washoe County Fire Services Studies.
Okay, that part, who's going to continue? I want to make this specific, before, I will vote yes if we can get it very specific.
The staff report is set aside, or set out for myself to participate.
You, the fire chief, right?
Yes. I don't manager, guide the union.
I want that in the motion. I'd like that in the motion, if you don't mind.
Okay, so what I would like to do is have that be Chief Flock and any staff that he chooses to include, because I know he relies heavily on some other staff.
That's fine.
Emergency medical services, I'm sorry. I would like it to be the fire chief and staff that he chooses to include.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
And I want to make sure, can we reiterate in this motion, that the city council does not want to consolidate fire, police, or government?
It says and exclude consolidation as an option.
Let's get specific, because everybody's going to say consolidation of what? Can you say consolidation of fire, police, and government?
I'd be happy to amend that.
Thank you, I'll second that motion, then.
Okay, any further discussion? Doug, are we okay here legally? I mean, the scope of the motion's not too large, it covers the agenda item, all right?
Yeah, I think the motion is fine.
Okay, good. Questions, Ms. Ratty?
Actually, go ahead, let's.
Do not ever do that again. I mean, the scope of the motion's not too large, it covers the agenda, Adam, all right?
Yeah, I think, I think the motion is fine.
Okay, good. Questions, Ms. Ratty?
Actually, go ahead, let's.
Do not ever do that again.
Sorry.
Okay, everyone understands the motion, I assume? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, please vote. Okay, it passes four to one, Mr. Schmidt is a no. Okay. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh, I appreciate your.
Can I make a final comment?
Go ahead.
I want to thank you for allowing that participation, because it really does value me, and I also want to go on record as saying that I, I do respect the right of the fire union, our fire union, too, to have an opinion on these issues. And I would ask that we get some better advanced communication when there's going to be a public demonstration of that, that opinion. You have, your role that you play, we have our role that we play, and I think what we could all do from, moving forward from this, is have better communication. That would be what I would hope would be the experience that we take away from it.
Yeah, I think it was kind of, we kind of got blindsided, I think if we'd have known about it in prior to, it might have been different. Mr. Carrigan.
Yeah, and I'd like to go on record as saying that if you're going to jump the chain of command, you really did it in a fantastic way, because you not only just jumped the city council, you went right to another government agency, so I appreciate that.
Any more public fogging?
Sure, you want to sit down, I'll give you some room.
No, I think we're fine. You got something to say, go ahead, Mr. Carrigan.
Ms. Ratty, I really appreciate the comment. It was not my intention to supersede any kind of chain of command. I made my statement to a governing body that was specifically weighing in on the issue, knowing that my governing body, the governing body I work for, you guys, had already come out with a stance of no consolidation. You already came out with that stance, I wasn't going to come to you and say, consolidate, you already have a stance. I am looking out for the best interest, how I see the community as a whole. You guys are looking out for the City of Sparks, and that is how I'm representing that. I'm sorry if I stepped on any feelings, it was not my intention. And as far as communications go, I will try and become better at it.
I appreciate those comments, you know, I think for me, I'm just speaking for me, if I'd have known in advance what was happening, maybe just a heads up, so you don't get called by somebody, and you know, they, there's a lot of people that know that we're against consolidation, and then we have our firefighters talking for it, so that's all. You know, you, you guys as a union have your things that you need to do, and make your policies, and I understand that, so that's, that's all I'm saying.
And I understand the same about you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, can we move on with the, do we, we don't need to come back after we adjourn, do we? So we can just adjourn to a, okay, comments from the city manager, city council. Seeing none, do we need a motion to adjourn to a closed-door session?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Schmidt, to adjourn to a public, or to a closed-door session, attorney-client, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, pass unanimously.